To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to the NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Here.
Mr. Book.
Here.
Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Ms. Parnas.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Dr. Hofstein.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Do we have any resolutions this evening?
We do have one resolution this evening. This is resolution number 2024-16. Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval with conditional use variance on property located at 1 Six Flags Boulevard, block 3101, lot 1101. Eligible to vote on this resolution are Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stafford Smith, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Book, Mr. Hudak, Ms. Parnas, and Ms. Bradley.
Roll call, please.
Motion?
Oh.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Do we have any minutes this evening?
Yes. Approval of minutes from January 3rd, 2024, from Elizabeth Rammer.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
I have a voucher for the Township of Jackson for the recording secretary for this evening in the amount of $175. I need a motion and a second to pay the voucher, please.
Move to pay the voucher.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Do we have any announcements this evening, Mr. Murphy?
Uh, we have no announcements this evening.
All right, so we need to swear in the professionals?
Gentlemen, thank you for raising your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes.
If you would each please state your name and your position with the board.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Jeffrey Puporo, zoning officer.
Thank you.
And I believe we're having an executive session this evening, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I can articulate the resolution for executive session, um, we'll need to have a motion to accept the resolution and a second and a roll call. Um, whereas the zoning board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public matters relating to items or item, uh, item or items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B. This evening those matters being attorney-client privileged discussions related to potential litigation. Um, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of the Township of Jackson, uh, enter the executive session for discussion of, uh, attorney-client privilege matters, uh, and potential litigation. Um, it is anticipated that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination that public interests will no longer be served by such confidentiality. Um, if I could have a member make a motion to approve this resolution? Move to approve the resolution and go into closed session.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Uh, at this time, uh, any members of the public that are here, uh, you will need to exit the room. Um, we're gonna have executive session, uh, in this room, so, uh, if you are not a board member, board professional, attorney, employed by the board's attorney, you're gonna have to leave this, the, the room at this time. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Move it, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Ms. Brack? Yes. We are gonna move forward to application number one. James Hughes, 280 Faraday Avenue. This is for an amended site plan, 261-1 with use variance 3479.
Just quickly for the record, I just wanna acknowledge that there's no matter for discussion or administrative approvals. Thank you.
Hello? Hello? Okay, I'm ready to go. Just for, just for the record, Timothy B. Middleton on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Hughes. It's fairly...
Excuse me, one second. I don't mean to be rude, you're gonna have to hold the microphone up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll repeat myself again. Timothy B. Middleton on behalf of the applicant, James Hughes. This is an application, you know, fairly straightforward. The application, the applicant is seeking approval for the preliminary and final site plan approval, and use variance approval to convert a portion of his yard, approximately 36,500 square feet, to a storage area for vehicles, heavy equipment, storage trailers, materials, so on and so forth, which he'll describe in more detail. And I think we're ready to proceed.
Is your first witness?
Yes, Mr. Hughes.
Okay. Mr. Hughes, would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments are about to present before the board or present the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name.
James W. Hughes.
Spell your last name, please.
H-U-G-H-E-S.
And you are the property owner, is that correct?
Excuse me?
You're the property owner, is that correct?
Yes. I have a hearing aid, so sometimes...
Understood, I'll try to keep my voice up.
I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Hughes, as you pointed out, you're the property owner and the applicant, correct? That's correct. And just if you could, briefly describe the property to the board? I have a lot in the, behind my other lot, and it's an open lot, and I plan on letting people park in there for storage and, like, vehicles, or if a landscaper needs a place to put his equipment, et cetera, in that order. So you would store, for example, and you and I spoke about this, but, cars, trucks, RVs, campers? Boats. Boats on a trailer. So, a storage trailer is correct? Yes. And then you indicated to me earlier today that you wanted to store perhaps materials? Yes. Can you explain the... Like PVC pipe or fencing, if I need to do it in a section. Okay. In the area you wanna store the material, and the cars, the RVs, that's depicted on the map that was submitted to the board in connection with this application, correct? Yes. As I understand it, you currently operate your plumbing business on the property? Yes. You have, as I understand, two separate buildings? Yes, I have an office in the front and a warehouse in the back. And, as I, as I went through the record, the office in the front was approved by the board, I believe, in 1983? Yes. And the separate building, we call it the warehouse building, was approved by the board in 2011? That's correct, yes. And you weren't involved in 1983 application, were you? No. And, but you were the applicant in 2011? Yes. So you're just to modify the approvals granted by the board in 1983 and 2011 to allow the storage? Yes. What I'd like to do, Mr. Hughes, is the, Mr. Peters has issued a, as he usually does, a fairly detailed letter, and ask him some questions. Not many are for you, but there's a few. So why don't we go over the letter, if we could? The letter's dated, by the way, January 30, 2005. Paragraph B, there was a request to describe the current use and the proposed use. I think you've done that. Moving down, actually to paragraph M, there was a question regarding providing testimony to discuss where solid waste and recyclables are stored and how they are removed from the site. You don't have no waste or... So you currently...
Say that again?
I send all my vehicles out to get serviced. We don't do new vehicle service.
So that we know service on the property?
No. Correct. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Hughes? I don't know what the board does?
Any questions?
Through the chair.
You mentioned something about using landscape trucks and other kinds of equipment. Is that specifically for your business, or is that subleasing it to other businesses?
Other business, if they wanna store their vehicles there. I've had them approach me and ask me, can I park there and, you know, do their work out of there. And perhaps I should, I should explain the use, the use variance application, or the use variance aspect of the application. So, Mr. Hughes currently has a plumbing business on-site. It's been there for 20, 30 years. If he wanted to store pipes, plumbing equipment on-site, that would not, that would not require a use variance. The use variance is required because the storage of the materials, the RVs, is unrelated to his business. And because it's unrelated to the business, it requires a use variance. So the, the storage of the RVs or the boats are unrelated, so that's, that triggers the use variance.
Thank you.
What would be stored in the containers? The containers that are, you're planning on putting in there? The trailers, like you have one there now?
Yeah, that's, that's my storage trailer. I have plumbing equipment in there.
Okay, but the people who will be leasing the area on the property, what will they be storing, or what can they store in the containers?
Well, whatever they store in their equipment, if they have, I don't know, if they bring a trailer and they have hot water heaters, or toilets, or sinks, or whatever they bring in there, you know, I'd have to check and see what they're putting in it.
Will they have workers in the containers who will be able to do any work on the equipment?
No, no.
Or is it just for storage?
No, this is... It's just storage. This would be, for example, a, I'm just giving an example. There's a, there's a local electrician who has nowhere to store his equipment, the wires, the pipes, whatever he uses. If he had a storage trailer, he would store, you know, the, the items he wasn't using in a storage trailer, and maybe once a week, once a month, maybe twice a week, he would come to the site, open a trailer, pull out some wires, or whatever inventory he needed, and then leave. Nothing will be done on-site.
Okay, so the, so the trailers will be there continuously?
Yes.
They're not mobile?
They're not in and out, no. That's not the purpose.
Will they be set on the ground, or will they be, will they be raised on concrete blocks?
It could be put on blocks, it could be put on six-by-sixes. It wouldn't be laying on the ground.
Okay, and how many trailers do you propose to be on the site? So it doesn't just become a, a place to store supplies? In other words, something like little warehouses?
Well, I would assume they could probably put four or five trailers on there with no problem, and have, still have plenty of room for other stuff.
Mr. Peters?
Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to sort of try to put our arms around this a little better. So, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Middleton, often the board, when they hear use variances applications, and someone comes in and says, "This is what we're proposing to do." Often the board wants to hear what we're not gonna do. Because at some point in time, when y'all leave here, the only enforcement issue we have is, is your testimony. Correct. So if someone comes out and says, does something different, and the code enforcement officer says, "I don't know." So, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, and please understand, they're not meant to be forward. They're, they're meant to make a clear record. No, no, we, we... Okay? And the members who are here are your neighbors. They're not here to crucify you. So, the questions I'm gonna ask have to do with other applications we've heard, and other issues that the municipalities had. They're not specific to you, Mr. Hughes. They're specific to things that have happened in the town. We wanna make sure we write them down, that you said, "No, I'm not gonna do this." Right. So the first one, you're gonna find odd. The trailers. Will you limit how high people can stack them?
Yes.
To one?
Just one.
Well, we, we heard an application a couple weeks ago, where someone wants to bring in trailers, work on the trailers, and bring them back out. Problem is, you're stacking them three high. See the problems?
Yeah.
So while, while we understand what you wanna do, we need to ask you some questions to indicate what you're not going to do, so we could sort of put a fence around your uses. If that makes sense.
So for the record, no stacking of trailers, obviously.
Thank you. This lease area, will it be available to more than one, I'm gonna call it tenant?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain to the board how that gets controlled? In other words, you're not leasing the entire fenced-in area in the back, are you? Is your stuff still gonna be there, or are you gonna lease that to anyone who wants to walk up and lease it?
No, my, my, I have that little corner, I have one trailer in there.
Use your microphone.
Oh, I have that one corner, and I have a trailer in there, and that's my equipment. That's right now, that's all I'm using.
Okay. And again, the, the reason that the board wants to get some specifics is because, God forbid, at some point, you sell the property, this variance goes with the land. So the next person who buys it from you can, you know, now all of a sudden, what we've created is a parking lot. As opposed to a storage area. So we're, we're gonna be asking some specific questions, so we have an idea of who's responsible for safety and the control of the people entering the site, and the times they enter the site.
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay. Will you be running any additional utilities out there, like electric or water and sewer?
No.
Again, the reason being, one of the board members already asked, is someone gonna work out there? No. You have people with storage trailers, run electric out there, and people are working.
No, we'll stipulate on the record, no, no utilities whatsoever, no electric, no gas, no water. And...
No one's gonna be working on vehicles out there?
No. The only, the only thing I envision is, I'm the electrician, I go to pick up my equipment and leave.
Again, we, we appreciate that, but we're just gonna close it in by saying, you're not gonna do these other things.
Correct. I have water on the back of my building that's next to the fence, that I hook hoses to water the trees and stuff, to keep, to keep the landscaping in good condition.
So this leased area is gonna be open sort of to the public?
Yes.
Are you gonna require your tenants to have some sort of insurance?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I think that's, those are the questions, I think I've sort of opened up a can for the board to ask more questions. But I wanted to ask you a couple things. First is, your building up front, the ware, the showroom, that's open to the public? The building in the, your second building in the back isn't open to the public, right?
No.
Okay.
And the whole building in the front's not open to the public. It's only a little section.
The showroom area.
And it's mostly for my clients that I do the work for, the people that I do the houses for. I let them come in and pick out the fixtures that they want.
Down on Sterling, where the entrance to the back area is?
Yes.
Currently, we have the dumpsters usually outside that fenced area. Are you gonna have another dumpster for your contractors in the back?
Most likely, I probably will, in case, I don't want any debris thrown around, and...
Well, here, here's what the town doesn't want. I don't, we don't want a series of dumpsters out on Sterling that aren't in a enclosure.
Well, that's not really on Sterling, it's on my property. I just didn't, I didn't bring the fence out that far. So it's on the corner of my, you know, it's up against my fence. I kept it off the road another 10, 15 feet.
I understand, I think that's probably one of the site plan issues we need to discuss, Mr. Middleton.
Yeah, when we, when I first did the building.
Respectfully, it's a dumpster underground.
Yes.
There's no enclosure, there's no safety, and I understand that generally, that's the easiest way to access it. But please understand that it's in a front yard, it's not protected. You know, you're gonna now bring one or 25 people in, and we just wanna make sure that, in the end, we create a good plan that you can be responsible for to the public.
I just explained to Mr. Hughes that the ordinance would require enclosures around dumpsters. He, he's agreed. And this, I think the engineer can talk about that.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, we'll figure something.
But I wanna know if we're gonna end up needing another one for the leased area, 'cause then we wanna talk about where it is, 'cause I don't want contractors, 10 of them, bringing stuff out front. They don't fill it up, it ends up on the side of the road. You know, you have that problem with pallets all the time.
I understand.
Okay. That's all I have at this point, Madam Chair. I just wanted to sort of kickstart the conversation.
Through the chair? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll just say, thank you. So the applicant has, has submitted, essentially, the use variance is new. Up to this point, the facilities that currently exist out there were planning board approvals issued by the township's planning board for the way the site currently exists. So the applicant is proposing something entirely new, which requires the use variance. As such, because they are proposing additional uses within what were originally approved, they are required to amend the site plan approval, which was issued actually back in 2011, initially in 1983, and then again in 2011 for an expansion for the warehouse. The plan that was submitted to you is nothing more than an existing conditions plan. The applicant has not proposed any physical improvements to this site. However, based on the intensification of the use, based on multiple tenants possibly being involved, there should be site plan, site plan improvements considered by this board. I would hope, we've seen enough of these types of applications, where we've liked to lock the applicant or the area down into where are these tenants entering and exiting the facility? How are they restricted from entering and exiting, entering the facility during off-hours? I.e., is there a gate with a lock box possibly in a code? What type of site lighting may or may not be required? What type of additional landscape buffering may or may not be required because of the intensification of the use? How are all of these individual storage areas gonna be delineated, so it's not just a free-for-all? It's one thing for the applicant to indicate, well, I'm gonna manage that, but if the applicant sells the property, somebody else comes in, we've always, we've always requested that the areas within the fence be delineated. And by that, I mean certain areas and certain only areas. Certain areas can only contain trailer storage. Where are those areas, and how many trailers can it accommodate? What kind of buffering around those trailers? What kind of accesses to those trailers? If there's outdoor storage of materials, bulk materials, what type of bulk materials are they? And they're gonna be restricted to that type of material only. I heard that it's possibly a landscape company. Does that mean they're gonna be manufacturing mulch, or storing stockpiles of soil? Or grass clippings, or leaves, those kind of things? If so, where on-site? In addition to delineating where those areas for each specific use are located within the site, how do we ensure that there's adequate site circulation for emergency vehicles? How do we, how do we also delineate, or where are the parking spaces delineated for those contractors who will drive their personal vehicles to the site, and then take construction vehicles, or possibly landscape trucks, out of here? So none of that information has been presented on this plan. And that is, all of that information is typically what we've asked for and required from applicants on similar applications. So, I'm not trying to overcomplicate this, but there's been, I didn't generate an engineering report, 'cause there was nothing to generate an engineering report on it. And I didn't wanna write, write a report just saying that. I think, I, I think to classify this as this is a very simple application, this board does not take these type, view these applications as simple. They like to nail, they like to, they like to know exactly what's going on at this site, and I don't have those details. I'm not... I'm not hearing those details at this point.
Yeah. So you're looking, I believe from what I'm hearing, you're looking for a, the site plan to be updated.
Yeah.
And provide obviously much more detail.
Well, you came in here saying it's an amended site plan application, but there's no amendment to the site plan. You're showing me what currently exists.
Right.
You're not, so I'm looking at it as saying, okay, you're proposing to do all these things.
No, I understand. I just wanted to regurgitate what you said. You're looking for much more detail because we don't have, we did not show on a plan what is being proposed.
All of the items that I just brought up are historically what this board has required for the last 20, 22 years since I've been sitting here. So you can go back and review some of the videos online of similar types of applications that might help you also.
I think I understand.
You're telling, you're showing us a fenced in area with all these kinds of things you want to do, but not explaining to us that the site can accommodate it. It's not, we don't, I can't, if the board were to ask me, is this site ideally suited to accommodate these uses? I'd have to say, I don't know. I don't know because there's no information provided.
Through the chair. In reviewing the application, I do see a statement of operations here which in and of itself alone, it's a letter dated July 31, 2023, lends itself to the fact that I think, again to echo Mr. Hill's point, I think we would want an amended site plan here. There's, this is, the way that I'm reading this, we have, we have one use on the property, we're proposing a second. And, you know, the storage of heavy equipment, trailers, landscape equipment, you know, that in and of itself needs, needs a circulation plan. It needs, you know, we need to see the parking plan, we need to see the layout of the parking lot, all of those types of things, you know, that we don't have in front of us. So I would, I would, you know, again caution the board on proceeding with this application at this point because as far as I'm concerned, for an amended site plan application, this application is not complete. Now legally, it's complete, but, you know, I don't think we have sufficient information here to make a determination.
Madam Chair, could I have two minutes, my client? And it just, we understand, we hear loud and clear what you're saying.
Absolutely.
I just need two minutes in the hall and I'll be right back.
Of course.
Madam Chair, lady, before we do that, one quick question. The approvals that were granted in 1983 and 2011 were approvals granted by the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. So the uses were permitted at the time. Was there, is there any approval in either one of those resolutions, 1983 or 2011, that allowed outside storage of anything?
Well, when I had my, when I had my storage building, I had trailers there at all times.
Well, I understand that. I visited the site, so I'm aware of that. My question is, so that we don't get into an area that we don't need to get into, my question is, based on approvals previously granted, did any of those approvals allow for outside storage of anything?
No.
So all the storage we're talking about tonight is, is part of this new use that you're asking for?
The 2000, it's right there, the 1983 approval, and I have copies, I'll hand them out before I go in the hallway. It was sort of short and sweet and essentially said, site plan to construct a warehouse with office space and parking located in the M1 zone. Applicant is also seeking waivers from providing internal parking lot, external curb, sidewalk pavement, pavement widening, and that was all approved. The 2011 application, that was filed by Mr. Hughes as we spoke about, and that was to construct another building. And I do note, paragraph seven, page three, there are a number of existing trailers on the site which may be stored on the property. However, no employees or other persons shall be permitted to reside in any of them. So I haven't scoured this before tonight about that issue, but I do notice that.
Excuse me, the trailers that were existing at that time, they were only for Mr. Hughes' business, not rented out to others, correct?
No, absolutely. We're, again, we're here tonight because.
I just want to make it clear to everyone that at that time, that was approved, but those trailers were for Mr. Hughes'.
You're 100% correct.
I also wanted to make sure that if what we have here is a, a new application for a new use, that all of those proposed uses have been noticed so we don't have a notice problem. So it's okay, the notice, even for the outside storage of materials. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
I'll hand these out in a little while for two minutes. We're going to take a five minute break until they come back. Okay.